Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to session this public work meeting, action meeting of the Mawa Board of Education for September 23rd, 2020. Due to COVID health crisis, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education will not be physically open to the public. This is to ensure we follow best practices for social distancing. The board meeting will be livestreamed to the public via Zoom. During the public portion of this meeting, members of the public can participate through the Q and A feature of Zoom. All participants must provide their name and address, and your comment and/or question will be read and included in the board's public record of the meeting, just as it would for a standard board meeting. Would you please take roll call, Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. Kuzmareski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco. Dr. Morthee.
Here.
Mr. Coe. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo. And Ms. Barrett.
Here, here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on September 23rd, 2020 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Would everyone please rise for a salute to the flag? Mr. Denise, would you like to lead us in the salute?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. We will take a few minutes here, see if any questions come in. May I please have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. Nothing? Okay.
Ms. Barrett, looking at the question and answer chat, no questions have been inputted or entered by members of the public. You're okay to proceed with the rest of the meeting and close the public session.
Thank you. I have a motion to close public session. Dr. Morthee, seconded by Mr. Kuzmareski. Dr. Fitz, you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do have a report.
Okay, I think that's it.
And your video. So great. There you go.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Let me take this opportunity to thank all of the people who made the return to school possible. It required the energy of a lot of people, and I'm not going to be able to cite them by name, but I'd like to thank the teachers who are completing and revamping what they have to do as educators. They are so committed to their students, and I base my wording or my remarks based upon my observations of going into the schools for the last three to five days and seeing what's going on in each one of the schools. I get a chance to talk to staff members, I get a chance to talk to students, and they tell me how much they enjoy being in school, and parents are really delighted that we opened up the school. The teachers are committed to their students, they're embracing the students, and they're teaching with rigor. I want to thank our parents for getting students ready and out of the door to catch the bus, remembering that some of the kids are in an AM program and a PM program, and not forgetting to encourage them to maintain social distance, wear the mask, and remind them to complete the health questionnaire that we require them to complete daily. I'd like to thank our students, too, for returning to school and believing in us and believing that we would have, and we do have, a very safe and conducive place for learning. Our facilities are clean. They are in remarkable condition. I want all to realize that the planning of this task force and this group is not perfect. I personally ask for your patience, because we have never had to start a year like we started this year. We will get better, and we will do better. We're addressing all of the issues that come before us. We're addressing all of the challenges that we're faced with. When we hear about something, we make an effort to fix it immediately. We've increased the bandwidth for our technology. We've increased the cleaning and the sanitizing of our buses that kids are transported on, and our staff is working hard to keep this place safe for children and for staff. So I'm very proud of the students, I'm proud of the staff, I'm proud of the work that we are doing in this district under the circumstances that we're working under. We're not at all discouraged. We are focused, laser focused, on getting the job done and doing it for the sake of children and families in this community. Tonight, you're going to hear about the graduation program, so that will be a part of my report, and that is the presenter here for the graduation. He's on the Zoom call, okay? If you could... Okay, that's it for me, unless you have some questions?
I'm just going to, one moment, bring in Mr. Gliotta, who will discuss the graduation report. Just one moment for Mr. Gliotta to join us. Okay, Mr. Gliotta, welcome.
Thank you.
If you're ready, I will bring up your presentation on the screen and share it with the board and members of the public.
Perfect.
Dr. Fitz, can we meet your speakers?
Sure, again. Okay, I can see. Thank you. Today, I'm going to present the graduation pathway statistics. To earn a Mawa High School diploma, students need 125 credits, four years of English, four years of physical education, three years of history, three years of science, three years of mathematics, two years of oral language, performing of visual arts, one, five credits, practical arts, five credits, and 2.5 credits of financial literacy. In addition to those graduations, those academic requirements, students also need to pass an assessment. Last year, we had 234 students graduate from Mawa High School. Of those 234 students, 222 passed through the traditional means of passing a park assessment, both math and English. Of the 234, 12 students graduated under the substitute competency test process, and that is SAT, PSAT, ACT, or Accuplacer. So the majority of our students passed through the New Jersey State Assessment of the Park, and 12 used an alternative assessment. No students graduated under the portfolio appeal process. We had one student who received a high school diploma through their IEP, and all our students graduated last year, and which was a huge accomplishment, once we went into distance learning, keeping track of our seniors, and get everyone to stay on task so they can fulfill their graduation requirements. In addition to the graduation statistics, I just want to put out a few more statistics from last year. Last year, we had 234 graduates. Of those 234 graduates, 95% went on to post-secondary education. Four-year colleges, we had 86% last year, which is a jump from 80% the previous year, and 9% of our students went to two-year colleges, and 5.1% went other, military, workforce, gap year, which is a little higher than normal, as you could possibly imagine. And to sum it all up, we had, despite what was going on with how the year ended, I'm very proud of the senior class. Last, this, the class of 2020, we have students from Mawa High School in 25 different states across the country, which always shows that our students are ready, willing, and able, and they have confidence to go out and branch out beyond the walls of Mawa High School and beyond the walls of the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Gliotta? Seeing none, Mr. Gliotta, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay. Mr. Bleecker, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. I do have a brief report tonight, two items. First is, just to bring to the attention of any members of the public that are attending, there were three additions to the agenda for this evening that were made after the agenda was posted publicly earlier this week. I will read each into the record for any members of the public that may not have seen them. They are presented to the Board of Ed this evening in front of them. The first is Agenda Item 15V. This is a revision to the school calendar for the 2021 school year. This is a revision due to Executive Order 177 as it relates to Election Day on November 3rd. That November 3rd will be a remote instruction day for our students. The schools will be closed for in-person instruction that day. That resolution reads, "Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Mawa Board of Education approves the revised 2021 district school calendar with a change that all schools will be remote learning on Election Day, November 3rd, 2020." The other revisions to the agenda for this evening are Resolutions 16F and 16G. 16F reads, "Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Mawa Board of Education accepts the resignation of Mark Esposito, teacher of social studies at Mawa High School, effective retroactive to September 17th, 2020." Resolution 16G, "Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Mawa Board of Education approves the appointment of Sabrina Sate as teacher of social studies at Mawa High School, effective retroactive September 22nd, 2020 to June 30th, 2020. Salary to be column D, Step 1, $57,001.01, prorated, pending employment verification." Those are the two additions to tonight's agenda, again, that were made after the agenda was posted publicly earlier this week.
Thank you very much.
I do have just one other, and this is a follow-up statement from something that was discussed during last week's Board of Education meeting. There was a few questions regarding disinfectant wipes in our school. Part of the Mawa's reopening plan that was submitted and approved by the state of New Jersey is to approve disinfectant wipes for the purpose of cleaning commonly touched surfaces, including desks and tables in our schools. Our approach, which is stated in our reopening plan, is to have students in our secondary schools assist by using these wipes either when they arrive in class or prior to them leaving class. This approach is felt to be appropriate because it maintains a high level of cleanliness throughout the day and encourages good practices. However, we have recently been informed that although the products we have been, although the products we use have been thoroughly vetted and approved for use in our schools, and there is no PPE required to use them, our approach for having students be part of this process has been brought into question. Considering this, we are currently reassessing this portion of our plan. If necessary, we will revise our plan. Ms. Barrett, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bleecker. Mr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. I have two cases to report. One is of gratitude, and one is informative. So the first piece, I spoke to Mrs. Ackerson. She's the Girl Scout troop leader for Girl Scout Troop 6498. She asked, she asked for permission for the Girl Scout troop to begin a Take Action project. It was born from a conversation amongst the troop and was proposed by students Julia Calucci and Samantha Ackerson to building principles. They will be creating lanyards for kindergarten students for the use of their masks, and this is for the Girl Scouts to continue their work towards their Bronze Award. So I wanted to thank the girls, and sure that we appreciate, and their written proposals were really well done. So that's the first piece. The second piece, Kyle, I can share my screen. Never mind, it's been disabled. So the second piece of my report is focused on the contact tracing protocol. We sent a letter out detailing what that process looks like, and speaking to parents informally, we believe that it was important for us to get the word out in terms of what it looks like. So what we did was, we placed the, sure, we placed the letter into a visual flow chart of sorts, which I'll be able to speak to. There we go. So, so our goal in sending this was to share a decision-making guide with our community under such uncertain times. So upon receipt of a COVID positive test, and I'll go through as I walk you through this, Kyle, hopefully you can just follow with me. Once we hear of a COVID positive test result from either a student or a staff member, we will automatically go into a 48-hour window where the school building will move into full virtual instruction. And the reason for this is, it gives us time, as the school district, to work with the COVID-positive staff member or student and engage with our assigned contact tracer, our assigned health officer, and district physician, while also talking to building and district leadership. So as of the start of the school year, we have had four COVID-positive reported cases. As we know, September 7th was reported from Betsy Ross School, September 16th was reported from Lennepin Meadow School, September 21st was reported from Mawa High School, and on September 21st, a separate case was reported from Rampuridge Middle School. So based on this contact tracing process, our medical experts then determine the length with which the school building will be placed on full virtual instruction. So it's dependent on the case at hand. So in some circumstances, the exposure is limited or isolated, which will require us to have specific individuals go fully remote, specific classes go fully remote, or specific wings of a school go fully remote, which has happened in the case of our district so far. In other circumstances, the exposure is broader, so that will require us to place the school building in a 14-day full remote instruction since the COVID-positive student or staff member was last in attendance at the building. So from there, students, staff members, and families are notified of the COVID-positive case, and what we do, what medical experts do, as well as they speak to the close contacts, and those are within six feet of a COVID-positive individual for 10 minutes or more, they're notified by our assigned medical expert and contact tracer. So I know that in the beginning of the school year, we sent out a lot of communication about our decisions, and I know a lot of families, a lot of staff members were a little confused. So our goal in the communication yesterday was to clarify something that may be perceived as a little nebulous, and it is often because it's really based on a case-by-case basis. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any report this evening. I just hope that everyone stays healthy and safe. Do we have any board committee reports for this evening? Dr. Morthee?
Um, yes, on behalf of instructional and curriculum and special ed, I'd first like to give a few minutes to Dr. Di Toro to tell us all about how the first week of school went and give us some update on virtual learning, hybrid learning, and what's been going on.
Thank you. At the instructional committee meeting last week, I was able to share with the, with the committee members some of the things that were going on, specific pre-K through 12. We talked about the upgrade in our system for technology, and I'm happy to report that there has been an increase in consistency and delivery of instruction, so we're going to continue to monitor that, and that's going to be an ongoing assessment. As it pertains to our fully remote population, when I was speaking to the committee, they asked me to share some updated numbers with the board. Last time I spoke to the board, I gave the numbers that came in on the survey, which was around 780. After we scrubbed the data, there were some duplicates, it came down to 766. From that 766 prior to us opening school, 26 said that they filled it out in error, so it dropped that number down, and then an additional 51 said that they didn't fill it out, so they wanted to be a part of it, or they have become a part of it as the school year has come on. So exact numbers as of the date of September 22nd, we're at 791 fully remote students. That being said, there have been a number of families who have asked to come back at the pre-K5 level. So we sent on the survey, asking our pre-K5 families if they were interested. We received a number of responses after we gave them some clarification, because we did say that we wanted to consider bringing you back prior to the November 11th date. Because there has been such an interest in doing so, we wanted to just see the interest to see if that was something that we could accommodate at our pre-K5 level. We spoke to the administrators to see if they can receive them without increasing the population that would exceed what we are requiring in the classroom. All of the administrators were on board, we took a look at the numbers. As it stands right now, the initial number of requests were probably around 70. We made individual calls, and we made confirmation emails saying, "Are you sure that you would like to come back?" After some clarification, they thought it was initially for November 11th, so that number came down from 70, some 72, down to, we're around 27. So again, we're going to continue to make confirmation, as much as we want to confirm and communicate, this, this number is going to be ever-changing. There's a lot of feelings about going fully remote or coming back in, and we want to do our very best to accommodate, but also not alter what's happening in instruction on either side. So we want to be thoughtful about it, that's why we wanted to gauge interest. The ones who have confirmed, we would love to do a tentative return date by next week. That being said, the administration is finalizing them, speaking to the teachers that this is going to impact, so that's going to be something that we're going to be ironing out as the week goes on. So we did want to share some, share some feedback on the fully remote setting, as it pertains to our first virtual Wednesday. Knowing that this is a brand-new program, this is something that we're trying to continue to standardize at the pre-K through 12th grade level. Obviously, 6th through 12th is a band that would be more of a logical, create commonalities there, and then at the pre-K5 level, same thing. Last week, a large majority of our staff went synchronous, which is gone, they went live. It went well. There was, there was a portion that went asynchronous that is going to be adjusted for the next virtual Wednesday. All of our teachers will be going live in some capacity with our students, whether it's whole group for an extended period of time, or whole group and then small group, depending on the students' needs. As I shared at the last meeting, we're continuing to gather data to create student profiles on our students, so we can make sure that that small group interaction is purposeful and developed specific to our kids. So again, that was our first virtual Wednesday. Our next virtual Wednesday is next Wednesday. Information will be going out to the community that did receive asynchronous instruction to make them aware that we will be going live for this up-and-coming virtual Wednesday and really create those common parameters. You know, we have a lot of programs going on, and we are really committed to making sure that communication is going out in a thorough fashion. That being said, there's so many moving parts, we need to continue to wrap our hands around what is, what we feel is go, is effective, what needs to change, and then we alter accordingly. So that's going to be an ongoing process. As Dr. Fitz said, we're doing our very best to be out in the, in the schools, speaking to the administrators and the teachers, and gathering that feedback along the way. So that, that's my report from instruction.
Um, thank you, Dr. Di Toro. I have a few other things, President Barrett. So I just wanted to highlight, so thank you very much for a very comprehensive report, Dr. Di Toro, and the Instruction and Curriculum Committee felt that the same, the information flow has been fantastic, communication has been great, keeping us informed of what's going on. And regarding virtual learning, I just also wanted to give a thanks shout-out to Linda Boni, because Linda has, or Ms. Boni has spearheaded for us the coordination of the virtual learning program. And if you can imagine, you've heard the numbers are, you know, that's 791 students who are fully remote. When I say virtual learning, I mean fully remote, and she has sort of taken on that to create the groups and make sure it all flows and all any technological issues. So she's really been, you know, a great leader in that front, so we thank her. I also just wanted to say to everybody that, you know, please be patient, like Dr. Fitz also said, understand that, you know, there are some people who wanted to go from hybrid to remote, there's some people who may want to go back. Again, this is all a process, and I think building administrations, teachers, central administration, everyone is really truly doing their best to maintain flexibility, allow for changes, but, you know, we have to keep in mind that there are also some things that can happen and can't happen. And if you have any issues, please be in direct communication with your building staff, with your teachers, and with central administration as needed. The other thing I wanted to highlight was, we got some report about some new books. This is kind of something different to talk about. In the sixth and seventh grade ELA curriculum, there were three books that were highlighted, books called Count Me In, one was called Home of the Brave, which is written in free verse poetry, and one called Navigating Early. So again, our teachers are maintaining high levels of creativity, they're introducing new themes, new topics, even with everything that's going on, and I thank them for their continued efforts at academics and maintaining our highest and best curriculum. Lastly, I wanted to just highlight about strategic planning, that Dr. Di Toro's report to us was regarding that, that we're hopeful that will come to the board in full sometime in October. I think there's only one meeting in October, and perhaps we're going to discuss that as a board, but we even considered, or perhaps thought of, perhaps we have a special board meeting for discussion and sort of really highlighting the strategic planning. So again, the strategic planning is on Dr. Di Toro's priority list. We're trying to get everyone back to school safely and soundly, but that's in the back of our mind for October, and we welcome, and we hope that the board, when that comes forward, really dives into it and comes forth with questions and good discussion about that for our future plans for the district. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Morthee. Anyone else? No? Okay. All right, do you have any other? Okay.
My good? So at our last board meeting, a few parents called in regarding the expectations for their students in our new world, and there was some discussion. Dr. Di Toro spoke about sort of as the year unfolds, that we'll be expanding the curricular experience, if you will, for our students, and I'm just sort of asking, you know, how that effort's going, where we are in our sort of rollout. where we are in our sort of rollout, you know, are we, are we gaining some steam? How are we, how are we doing?
Yes, you did. Now, it's, it's a very good question. That, that's something that, yes, we are, we are moving forward with content. Like I said at the last meeting, our, our main focus, and it continues to be a major focus for us, is to make sure that the, the social-emotional learning for both our staff and students is a priority. So in the beginning, we made sure that we created that culture of, of community within our schools and within our classrooms. That being said, in the first three weeks, we were able to, to solidify our online subscriptions for technology. So when we do go into the Virtual Wednesdays, these things are, are sound and set up. So those things are starting to come to, to be finalized. But that being said, content is being covered. Dr. Fitz has been in, in the schools, every single school, every single day. We were able to go into schools as well. And when you walk into the classroom, you know, whether it's at the elementary level and you see the, the ConnectEd everyday math program is up and running and they're into the, into the content, or reading or writing workshop is happening, or you're at the high school and middle school level, and they're, and they're digging into content too. That being said, now that content is being delivered in the classroom to that extent, now it will start to spill out into that, once you get into your, your other side at the K5 level, your other side of your instructional period, which is, if you're an AM child, when you go to PM, you're not going to be solely just doing a special. So that's stuff that we're going to, we're continuing to build out and something that the programs will, will, will grow as the weeks go on.
Thank you. On September 16th, I attended Dennis Fair's Second Mawa Township Stakeholder Meeting. This is a meeting where representatives from the various departments in town attend. We feel it's important during this time that we meet with them to share updates. And so Mr. Fair did share updates from the district, and the townships shared updates with us. And some medical data was shared, and we've decided to meet again in October.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Akon. Do we have any other board member remarks or comments anyone would like to make at this moment? All right. I'd like to take old business, may I have a motion to move on that? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Dr. Morthee. You're ready, Kyle?
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Akon? Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Now I'd like to take new business A through B, as in Victor. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Do we have any comments or questions on any of these items before we proceed? Mr. Denise, yes?
Just a real quick question. I guess this is for Kyle. On the CARES Digital Divide Grant, I assume that's a federal grant?
Yes, it is a federal grant. Oh, oh, no, I apologize. I take that back. The CARES Digital Divide was a state grant that came from Governor Murphy.
And how is that dollar amount determined? Is it based on this number of students in the district?
It takes into account the number of students, as well as the number of our free and reduced students that we have in the district as well.
Thank you, Mr. Denise, for that question. Okay, now I'd like to take new business A through Q. May I have a motion to proceed on that? I think I'm sorry.
For Items 15A, B, it was a motion by Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Akon? Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
All right, now I'd like to proceed on new business 16A through Q. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Denise, seconded by Ms. Akon. Does anyone have any comments or questions for any of those items before we take a roll call? Okay, would you please take roll call, Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Akon? Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except I am recusing myself on 16I.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. Public questions. Note, the section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to proceed? This, Dr. Morthee, seconded by Mr. Gallo. And again, as before, we will take a few minutes for questions to come in.
Okay, Ms. Barron, we do have one question or one statement that came in. David May, President of the Town Council. First, I would like to thank Board President Barron for participating in the township's 9/11 ceremony. Was wondering if any decision has been made on my proposal for broadcasting football games for the high school. Mr. May, at this time, I don't believe any decision has been made. We've yet to discuss that at the board level, if that's something we want to pursue and move forward on. Mr. May contacted me with a proposal from the board, I'm sorry, from the township, of a level of interest of participating with this, and we've yet to discuss it and make a determination regarding it.
And Mr. May, I'd also like to tell you that it was an honor and a privilege to take part in that ceremony. So thank you very much.
A question from Ms. Janine Grasso, 5 Herring Lane. Since I've been sitting on this call, I got two emails that JK and High School are now closed for several days. Most of these cases, it's been teachers. How does the BOE plan to address this? We all need to do our part, and I'm afraid that, that although we are being safe in the schools, it's clear that we are not being safe outside of school.
Thank you for your statement, Ms. Grasso. Right, Ms. Barron, seeing no other questions coming in?
May I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Dr. Morthee. Now, may I have a motion to recess to executive session? Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. Kizmarski. We are going to recess to public session, and we'll be adjourning the meeting after that. There'll be no, nothing that requires any action to take place during this executive session. So thank you all who attended.